Two thousand and twenty-one to order. We have a quorum. Item three are items for review and discussion. Item three A is the Department of Community Development. Three A one is connectivity presentation. Mrs. Wharton?
Yes, sir. Where would you like me to stand?
If you, anywhere you would like, if you're comfortable, you can get one of the stands and whatever is comfortable for you. There's a podium right behind you, there's a podium over there. Anywhere you want to.
Okay, if I stand right here?
Yes, that's perfect.
Okay. All right. Thank you guys for having me. I'm here representing the connectivity working group. This is kind of a new group of city staff put together. It includes myself and Mr. Severance Swan, Miss Ansley Fitzner, and Miss Anya Turpin. And we are working on a few connectivity related goals. So I'd like to start off by just sharing a little bit of the goals and objectives of this group. First thing we're working on is updating, reviewing, and revising the trails plan. We're going to refocus this and call it a connectivity plan. We're also researching and exploring some connectivity friendly additions to the development code. And this is something that community development is already looking into. Also researching and applying for grants for connectivity related projects. And. Here you go, Mr. Key.
I have a problem.
All right, I think we're good. So also through all of our work with this group, we will from time to time come to Mayor Council, offer some recommendations for suggested projects. So the primary focus of this group that I want to share with you is citywide connectivity. And later, we're going to highlight an example of each of these. But one example, we think that supports citywide connectivity is connecting and linking existing sidewalks. Another type of project for this is extending current, extending sidewalk infrastructure into new places. And then the third form of these connectivity projects are expanding and constructing new nature trails. So I'd like to share a little bit about the process that we're working through as a group. The first step, we're highlighting a few high-profile introductory projects, which we think will generate some momentum to get these projects moving forward. And I'm going to share a little bit about those in just a moment. Second, we're trying to develop a name and branding for this network. So hopefully in the next couple of months, we'll come back to you with some recommendations on name and branding. And then third, we want to make sure that the goals of this connectivity group are incorporated in the strategic planning process so that the focus remains on these projects long-term. So with that being said, a little bit about our group in general, I mentioned that we are planning to come to you for some recommended projects from time to time. Here we have three projects that we identified to get the ball rolling here. The first one is on Main Street. This is an example of linking up some sidewalk segments where there's a gap. This is at East Gate Shopping Center and Third Street. So this would consist of seven hundred feet of concrete sidewalk. We think this project would have very high visibility because it is on one of the main gateways into downtown Perry. And it will connect existing network, population centers, and significant assets. So this is the first project that we would like to highlight. Second project, this is on Highway three forty-one. This would be extending the sidewalk on Samdon Boulevard from about where the Popeyes is right now, going toward Houston Springs. This is a bit longer of a segment here, approximately five thousand feet of sidewalk. But this one is really important because it will connect some population centers and go right past one of our destination parks, Heritage Oaks Park. This will allow a lot more visitors to go to the park for events and things like that so that they can park and safely walk to the park from a different parking area. This one also does have very high visibility as it's located on a major corridor into the city of Perry.
Just a clarification for that on. The discussions have been that we would place that on the west side so that they would not have to cross the street at the park. But we'll cross it down there at I seventy-five. I think that's what the discussion has been. Robert?
Yes, sir. The red line and I guess the general discussion at this point, Todd, is purely conceptual.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we didn't represent that was what we're going to do.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So this is the second project we've identified. The third and final one is the extension of the Wicca Trail. So this is one of our existing nature trails. And we would hope to extend it through the forested areas south of Rotary Centennial Park, going toward Big Indian Creek, then cutting over going north up Ball Street, and then ultimately connecting back into the downtown sidewalk network. So this is a key extension of one of our existing nature trails. And this one, due to a little bit of topography issues and wetlands, the sidewalks would likely contain page portions and floor block portions or some other type of material that could go over wetlands. I would like to point out that this project is eligible for a Georgia Department of Natural Resources grant. And we have some training coming up on that program tomorrow. So we'll be learning more about the program and how it might fit for this project. So these are the three projects we've identified so far. I'm happy to take questions, but tonight we're looking for concurrence to move forward on these.
Counsel, questions relative to the recommendations?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Since we're connecting Third Street, I see people walking in the road on Houston Lake Road across from East Gate Shopping Center. Could that be a part of it as well? Because it only goes so far on Houston Lake Road.
Okay.
And if we're connecting Third Street right there, why are we stopping it right there and not adding that portion of Houston Lake Road that the people have to walk in the road in order to get to the shopping center?
Okay. Thank you for highlighting that portion where people may be walking in the road. Another part of what we're doing is identifying all sorts of segments where people may be walking in the streets and there needs to be more connections. So we'll definitely look into options for that portion as well.
I think, have we not looked into that sidewalk?
That is a project council's already approved.
That's what I thought.
See, with we, we have some right-of-way issues.
Okay.
Further down when you get around Lumpen Shell where Carol Alley comes in. There's some right-of-way issues we got to work out there. But that's already a project approved by council.
Okay, I just didn't remember that.
And there's, there is some getting close to the house down there right behind Carl's Station. The house that's on the corner is going to be an issue that we'll have to resolve. But that's been one of our top priorities to work through that. Other questions?
It seems like, of course, I'm just from memory, but I haven't been out there way lately. Five hundred feet is a little bit short, isn't it, to go from Popeyes to Houston Springs?
I think we had estimated that at five thousand.
Five thousand feet.
It's about right.
Did I say what I said? Five thousand is what's on the pad here?
Yes, sir.
That's about right.
It seems short to me.
That's a mile.
Somebody measured it literally.
Well, we will check it.
Okay.
It's about a mile out there. Five thousand two hundred eighty feet.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
Okay, thank you. Appreciate all the work you're doing on that. She says she wasn't looking for concurrence, is what I heard today.
We would be looking for.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said you would.
We're always looking.
Okay. I was disappointed because.
No, we would like to move forward if that's something that Mayor Council desires.
Counsel? You've heard these recommendations, these are three top priorities, including to the one over on Houston Lake Road or Houston Lake Drive. So do we have concurrence to start moving forward and try to bring these to fruition? We've been spinning our wheels over the last couple of years on these. And so I'd like to give these folks the opportunity to get it started back up.
Yes.
Do you have concurrence?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Holly, I was waiting until after we could.
I know one of them, she said, she said what? All the lines come from?
Well, I would assume that a lot of it have come out of Sploß. But we will come back to this body before anything's done. They'll come back and give you the fundings and what the actual costs are and everything else before they proceed. They're just wanting to get moving forward the design piece of it so we can actually come forward with the cost. Please, Mr. Yvonne.
That is true.
Yes, Mrs. Davis, several people have asked me about the possibility of a sidewalk coming down Perry Parkway toward Publix.
Okay.
Like there's two neighborhoods that empty onto the Parkway right there. And there's a large apartment complex. So now I have, people ask me, what's the chances of us getting a sidewalk so they could walk to Publix and the other places down there? Could that be added to your list to look at?
Absolutely, yeah. So we're making a list of lots of connections. And if anyone has any ideas of gaps that you know exist or where something is needed, please send it my way. We'll add it to our list.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counsel. Item three B is appearances. Three B one is a presentation relative to the Windstream expansion. Mr. Michael Flohr?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Wherever you're comfortable, we've got some telephones here if you'd like to use one.
What do we say, do you want technology work?
Yeah.
Well, thank you for allowing us to be here, Mayor, Council, and all the staff. We appreciate the opportunity. I spend a lot of time in this area. My wife's family's from here. Theodore Waddle, Ted Waddle, we stay rent-free from the area. That's my wife's grandfather. So we love to spend the time down here. But we are happy to be here today to just share a little bit about what we have going on in the community, give you an update. We realize so many times we work and work and work, but we don't let the communities know what we're doing. So sometimes we have to stop and tell you. And also, I think one of the most important things we would like you to do is leave today with this list of contacts that we have here that we're going to provide you. So if you ever do have a question, if you ever do need anything, you know who to contact within our organization. We have a whole team here. Again, the opportunity to be in front of you, we wanted to make sure you know, know your local team. So I'm Michael Flohr, I'm president of Georgia Field Operations. We have Billy Bob Breeden. He is the director of operations for Middle Georgia. Randy Wilson is our local manager for this area.
Whitney.
Seeley is the senior retail manager. Kelly Chapman, she manages our retail store here locally. She's the assistant retail manager. Kelly, you can explain that better.
Okay.
David Emmett is the director of field sales. He is stationed right here in Perry. Kevin Long is our local SMB sales rep. And Nicole Payne is the one who puts the great presentations together. She's the regional marketing rep. And we have, we're blessed to have a great team. You know, I say what makes, we have, Kinetic is a business unit within Windstream. And we're really the new generation of products and services that are rolling out. So, and Georgia is the largest state for Windstream. We cover eighteen states. I don't want to take too much of Billy Bob's. That's why the folk put me on the agenda. But I love what we do. But we serve eighteen states. Georgia is our largest state. And, you know, and we always say how Georgia goes, Kinetic goes. And I think what makes us successful in Georgia is the heart of our team. So I'm going to turn it over now to Billy Bob and ask him to cover a little more of the detail here.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. So for me, just a little bit about Kinetic by Windstream overview. So for us, we currently have twelve hundred plus employees in Georgia. We have thirty-two employees in Houston County with three openings, positions in Perry. We might have some more Randy Vincent up today, some more coming up. So we currently have invested over five hundred million in Georgia over the last few years. Over one hundred and fifty thousand gigabyte qualified locations in Georgia, or, yeah, in Georgia. Over five hundred thousand twenty-five megabyte or greater qualified locations. Currently, we're hiring across this state and the whole region. We're hiring lots of people. So we partnered with being the fastest internet, I'm sorry, partnership to bring fast internet to the rural communities, Copcat DMC, Chattanooga County, Big Canoe, and Allentown. We're also active at the state and federal level with customer support for expedite service to rural footprint. And then we're on the broadband advisory committee and then the broadband ready community. So, and the last one, I'm going to have to read here because I can't see it there, so broadband dot Georgia dot gov. So don't want to take any of Randy's thunder, but he has a little bit he wants to share. So, any questions?
I'm saying it was great that you're hiring so much right now. Yeah, it's great.
All right. Tell you what, basically, you know, I just want to go ahead and share with you guys where the, something with the Kinetic in Perry. Perry in itself, the areas that we service are in the green area, you know, all the surrounding services. And currently, right now, the blue that you see is basically where we have our one current gig customers at this time. The gray area is the city of Perry that we service. And the pink area is where we're looking forward to go to one gig by the end of this year. Am I correct, Michael?
It should be starting construction.
Yeah, construction will be starting. Am I allowed to, you know, basically, that's some of the positions that we have opened here locally. I've added to our technical staff. We've more than doubled that within the past three months. And it is five positions that I have opened currently at this time underneath myself. But we're looking to fill in a lot of our construction and our very drop teams that we're going through. Kinetic passes more than twenty-five thousand households and businesses in Perry. Currently, twelve percent have access to gig speeds via our fiber network right now. And, you know, approximately forty percent have access to speeds in the range of a hundred megabits or greater. And approximately seventy-five percent have access to speeds of the range of twenty-five megabits or greater. You know, in two thousand and twenty-one, you know, with our planning and development, you know, to build the fiber to the additional fourteen thousand locations, will put us at the sixty-four percent of gig qualified customers. So we've got a lot of growth going on. And I turn this over to, I think it's.
Wait, wait.
Yeah, wait, you see it. Okay.
Did you use the LJ narrow to bring?
Yeah.
Narrow to the right.
Oh, there we go. All right. So while Randy was talking about growth, I think one thing that's important to add is that we've also grown our presence in a lot of communities around here. And during the height of COVID, there was a lot of rental locations nationwide that closed. In our business, we have continued to grow. The most recent location that we've opened up here is near the photo, is right over in Byron, just about ten minutes away. And we're continuing to grow all over Georgia. I think we have four locations on deck for the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-two. Some of the products and services that we offer, we partner with YouTube and DirecTV to provide entertainment services. We offer an excellent security product. We actually won two industry awards for our security products last year. We offer voice services, internet speeds up to a gig. And we also offer home office products for people who run a business or work from home. And I think this is actually you, Kevin.
Us. So Mayor, Council, constituents? Sorry, they're fine. Kevin Long.
So, hey, one of the things, part of our growth that we have is not only just actual physical presence in the ground or on the poles or coming into your building, but it's also applications, right, that we have. And so these are software-type driven applications that can help you run your business. And part of that is the entertainment aspect of it as well as security and network. Voice would be part of that, including that. And internet and cloud applications. And we'll dive just a little bit deeper into each one of those subjects.
So our voice services that we offer on the business side, we offer dynamic IP. And we also offer standard business lines. For our internet customers, we offer business dedicated service starting at a hundred megabit all the way up to ten gigs plus. Our cloud and our premium-based firewalls and managed routers, we also offer business broadband up to one gigabit per server. For our cloud applications, we have Radiant Digital Science where you can advertise within your business what you guys are offering. We also offer security and networking, managed network, and internet security.
Thank you.
So I'm Kelly. He's actually my boss. I'm the assistant manager. I have a Byron location, a location in Mid-Georgia, and one in Douglas, New Orleans. But I'm here in Byron, I live in Byron a lot. We have a very wonderful lady named Tracy Frost. She's there Monday through Friday from eight thirty to five thirty. So stop by. And our phone number is nine five six one G. So if you don't remember, number still one G. Make sure you directly reach Tracy. We do have a referral program. So if you have our service, you can actually, if you can call in to one of our stores, we can actually help you set up on our referral program. If you refer someone, you actually get a one hundred dollar Visa card. Well, they get a one hundred dollar Visa card and you get a fifty dollar bill break. So it's like you can, just for telling somebody, hey, why don't you go try to make, I have my living is great. You know, you're making money, they're making money. You know, who doesn't want free money? And you're getting a great service. So, and we're always there to help. Like I know a lot of people, I hate calling the eight hundred number, call us. We do everything we can to try to help you right there in store. We do take payments right now while we're doing credit card payments. But we're there to answer questions and be there for you. We also, right now, we're actually working on, we have an app. It's called the My Win app. We're actually doing some upgrades to it. But you'll be able to, you can download it to your phone. You'll be able to go in, make payments on it, check your order status. You can actually, you'll see where you can get upgrades, manage your Wi-Fi networks. You can also shop because we have different little nice things that you can buy. And even if you have a repair issue, you can actually go into the app on your cell phone and put in your own repair ticket. I had to do it last Thursday. So, and we're actually making upgrades to it so it's actually going to be way better than what it is now. And how convenient is because we're always on our cell phones. So how convenient is if you think about, hey, I just changed my bill and pay that right quick while you're on vacation. So you don't have to worry about calling in to the eight hundred number. You can do it right at your phone. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Sure.
And during operating, a lot of time I noticed that when the weather come in, have a problem with connection.
Okay, so you're having problems like when, I've had that issue too. When you're having that issue, call us right when it's like, while it's happening. Because it's very important to pinpoint what's going on. You need to take me and get someone out. Because sometimes if there's an issue where maybe something's getting away in the line, if that line drives, dries out and the technician comes out, he's not going to find the problem. So say if your service is having like an issue while it's raining and you notice, hey, my internet's going out and it's wet outside, go ahead and call and let them know, hey, this happens when it rains. So that way, when that technician comes out, he knows, okay, something's got to get away somewhere.
You're welcome. Or you could also just use the app. And I also want to say one thing about the, this application, it is state of the art, is very user-friendly. And the upgrades that Kelly was thinking about are, that are coming are actually so that you can manage your home security systems through the app as well, which is going to be really exciting. We actually already have customers that are asking about the feature, surprisingly. And we're really excited for that rollout as well.
What's the difference between DirecTV from AT&amp;T and DirecTV?
It's the same, okay. It's the exact same product. It's just that we offer, like when we sell the product, we're still DirecTV.
You can also bundle your billing, like you may already do with your AT&amp;T bill. We do the same with DirecTV.
Do you still have DISH?
No, ma'am, we don't actually partner with these networks anymore.
I remember, I remember that. That's when I started out, I had DISH.
We have more and more customers now actually using YouTube TV than DirecTV customers. Most of the customers who are signing up for entertainment packages are going with a streaming product. And they've really advanced as well. Most of the interfaces in the streaming products like YouTube TV is very similar to what you'd be familiar with with DISH, correct?
And that's where you call in and, or you stop by the store and say, hey, can you check to see if I can get an upgrade? Because you upgrade your speed, the better that YouTube TV is going to work for you.
A question that may be for these gentlemen. Most of what you said is a foreign language to me. But I seriously have a question. And I'm going, I'm going to struggle through trying to ask it, okay? Do you have in place now in Perry, let's say we had a new industry come to our industrial area and they were going to have maybe three hundred employees make parts that they were going to ship all over the world? Are you, I don't know, this is the wrong word, but are there places in Perry already fiber-ready or gig-ready?
That's, that's exactly what we're discussing about. Pretty much of what, that map that I was going over of where we're at here in Perry, everything that's in green, the majority of our products that are especially inner-city, some of the outlining exchanges that we have, like with Bonner, anything in the Houston County that's part of the exchanges, those will have fiber being built to them. And, you know, but the industrial parks right now, I believe, out, is that out by Airport Road that might be talked about?
Well, there, but also out Valley Drive and our industrial area, South Perry Parkway?
Yeah.
Ma'am, if you have, say for example, a constituent or a customer that's looking at one of those industrial parks and sometimes they'll look for like a ready letter, you know, to state that, hey, this particular industrial park will meet certain specifications of that particular customer, then, you know, we'll gladly put that information together for you.
Yeah, and it would be. Yeah, and it would be sending out, like, somebody from planning, development, and all that stuff, and being able to, you know, get everything built.
So that could be part of our marketing package, that all of that was there and ready to go.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Good question.
I'll go hang out to Nicole.
Actually, we work with communities. The DCA has a certification that you can get for certain areas where it says that they're fiber-ready. So if you look at the Department of Community Affairs website, or if you call Dina Ferry or any of her staff, they can assist you with that. We work with, was working with Blomkin County, they were finding areas that had, were going to develop and just confirming that we had access to fiber there, that if they did decide to develop that, that we'd be able to buy the gig service. We're glad to do that. Well, that's briefly, we've got a lot going on. They mentioned hiring. Right now, we just opened up 700, over 700 requisitions across the 18 states that we serve, because we're going to be doing some major construction over the next few years. Our investors have committed $2 billion to build, and we're going to be building a lot of fiber. We're seeking community partnerships if there, I mentioned Chautauqua County, Chautauqua County, we partnered with them, they committed some funds, we matched those funds, because there were areas of the community that they wanted us to get to faster, and we were able to do it just by ourselves. So we partnered with them to do that, we partnered with Cockwood EMC, have discussions with Flint EMC on how we can work with them, so constantly looking at how we can go faster by partnering with communities as well. So if there is a pocket of your community that you're concerned about that doesn't have service, just know that we're open to talk to you about that, and we're open to look at that with you. And so all you have to do is call us, and we'd be willing to sit down at the table and look at that. We, our maps, you know, we'll open up under the hood, we'll show you, we know what's served, what's not served, and most of the footprint that we have. But again, we go as fast as our capital will allow us to. Sometimes somebody wants to partner and help us go faster in certain areas, and we welcome that opportunity. So thank my team for being here today, and thank you. Any other questions we can answer for you?
Any other questions? Thank you for coming, we appreciate the update. 3C is the Department of Public Works, 3C1 is Crossroads Park. Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Thank you. Staff has been working with our consulting engineer the past several months to prepare this project for bid, and bringing to you the package tonight for another review of the concepts and elements, to gain feedback you might have, and then if everything looks good, a concurrence to move forward for bid. So just as a refresher, this is pretty much phase two. We already did an installation of tree plantings and some planters along the sidewalk. So what I'm going to be talking about today is really highlighted in this green area here, these two sections on the other side of Third Street. And the entire package is available for your reference on board pack, the entire construction documents, but I'm just going to highlight this drawing landscape plan, because it reviews most of the elements. And here's a zoomed-in version here. Most of what's happening on the east side of Third Street is just some screening plantings, and then referencing Holly's priority list earlier, a section of that sidewalk connection along Third Street and Main. And then over, sort of the meat of the project is over in this larger section, and we've included the relocation of the Girl in the Tree art installation from the event center. That'll be located here in the center of a sodded lawn space, with seating on either side, and then seating is shown here. A water feature, it'll look similar to this picture here, except that it won't hold just stagnant water, it's going to be filled with decorative stones to filter through, for liability reasons, but also just sort of an aesthetic look. And it's surrounded by a shant and stain concrete patio area. Site grading is going to be minimal, but it will level up this courtyard space here. Due to that, we will need a small retaining wall. It'll vary in height, but at the most about three feet. That'll provide us an opportunity to put signage along the front with some uplighting that says Crossroads Park. And it'll double as a seat wall on the other side for this water feature patio area. There'll be some uplighting on some of these perimeter trees, lighting within the water feature, and then along the perimeter of the art installation, there's some perennial and evergreen plantings, and then tree plantings in here as well. I don't know if you have any questions, if you want me to go into a little more detail on any of the elements. We don't have a cost estimate yet. If you were to compare this, I would say Legacy Park is in general a good comparison, and they're about the same size. That was about a $600,000 project. It's less site grading, less of a water feature, but we're talking ballpark numbers.
Questions about Crossroads Park? And we've already provided the currents to move forward, as I understand, have we not? What we'll be looking for?
Subject to you while approving this final design.
This is the final design, she's coming forward. Do you have any questions or concerns about what's been outlined? I think it's reflective of what we've been talking about.
Yes, so, Mayor and Council, I'll also suggest, where you have a curved wall there, that you put in signs similar to Welcome to Perry, just like you have on the Welcome Park coming in for St. Rob 127, Swift Street. Go. Me, me. Actually, I'm correct there. Big city, I get lost. But, because you remember, one of the major things for this was a welcome gateway for coming into the downtown, so I would suggest that as an addition to go in.
Questions to council members? Do we have concurrence to move forward with this design as outlined? You have concurrence to move forward, we'll look forward to your estimate. Item 3C2 is Legacy Park Umbrellas, Ms. Fitzpatrick?
This presentation is really to gain some feedback and start a discussion about some options to provide shade to the picnic area at Legacy Park. I don't know if you all are familiar, but this is the Sinclair Station, across here is Carroll Street, and then this picture was taken from Main Street. So we're talking about this concrete patio here with the four picnic tables. Especially this time of year, those black tables on the white concrete pad can get kind of hot, and there's a lot of sunlight there. So we're just going to go through a few options. If you all would be interested in providing some shade, I think it would make this space a little more user-friendly. The first option here is to retrofit our existing picnic tables. The current tables do not have a hole in the center to place an umbrella, similar to the parklets that we have downtown. So we could remove the tables and retrofit them in-house to make room for them to receive just a commercial-grade umbrella. It would be sort of a seasonal option. There would be some need to raise and lower depending on weather or use, time of year, and there's a potential for damage or needed replacements, but this would be the most cost-effective option. The second, two options are similar. If you all recall, at the splash pad, we have some of these cantilever umbrellas. That would be an option to install. They'd be about $3,500 each, we could install them in-house. They would provide a 10 by 10 shaded area. A con to this installation is, once they're in, they're permanent. If we ever decide to shit some of the furniture, add some tables, those wouldn't be able to be moved around accommodating any alterations in that space. Some of the posts are pretty big, as you can see, and they might create some obstructions to views, particularly this first picnic table, which is near the monument sign that was installed. And there's really no flexibility. If the sun is directly above the tables and the shade is at its optimum orientation, but if the sun is either, you know, early in the morning or later in the afternoon, the shade will be cast to one side or the other of the table. The next option is similar, it would be surface-mounted, so it would be easier to move them if we decided to move them around, but still a similar dilemma there where we have to put four, we have to place them throughout according to where we think is the best fit, but depending on the sun position would determine whether the table is actually shaded or not. They're about $3,000 each. We could also install those in-house. And then the final option is, if you can tell from this tiny picture, morning by morning has some shade sails on their rooftop. We could do something similar, where we would have some posts, and this is just an image for reference, we can get something custom to the size of our pad, but it would have some posts around the perimeter and then suspended shade sails above. And that would be permanent, be rated for the weather. It would be a higher cost, and you see it's estimated about $35,000 to install. That wouldn't be able to be installed in-house, so that includes an estimate for shipping, labor, installation, the design work, and everything. So I don't know if you all have any questions, if you already feel like you have a preference, or if you'd like to think about it?
I have a preference, but I have champagne taste. I like the one down at the bottom, the $38,000, because I think it looks better for our park.
And it would cover, the intent would be to shade the entire patio, so if someone was gathering as a group, if we decided in the future to add more furniture, it would shade the entire space.
Is there funding source on this? Probably the funding source on this is 18.
If we went with the first one, where we were, we could buy the big umbrellas, could you adjust those with the movement of the sun?
If they had this whole feature, we are having trouble with those downtown. It seems that the wind is causing them to fall pretty easy, but we could potentially reserve.
I think if we got heavier, yeah, I think we are, I think we bought those from local vendors, and they do make a commercial grade that would, I think would work out there. They won't be, they'll be more costly than what we estimate, but...
I know that's sun-resistant fabric, but do they give any kind of estimate as to how long, how many seasons, would they be there year-round? Some would have to be there year-round, right?
That's right. Yeah, almost all.
Almost all of them.
Except for the retrofitting.
Now, the retrofitting, they wouldn't have to be there year-round.
We can take them down, put them up when seasons change and...
Which would cause the fabric to last longer.
I think it depends on the quality, like the canopy at Heritage Oaks is rain-in for that, so if you've got something of that quality, it would be meant to last, I would think, five to 10 years.
Any more thoughts, or do you want to think about it for a little while? I know this is the first time you've seen it, and we can bring this back at our next work session, and after you've had a chance to investigate some of the different options.
Please, let's do this.
How important do you feel like it is to be able to take them down? Is that a factor to you, or?
No, I don't think it's necessary, because, you know, we have such a long warm season here, and I don't think that it would prevent people from using it in the colder months. I just think that people really aren't using it that much during that time of year anyways. But I think it would really, I mean, it would really allow a lot of people to use it now. It was a lot of people who get down there, they think that they're going to sit and eat lunch, and they take it.
And I think we need to think about how we obstruct the views of that park. It's such a nice visual noun, and if we go in and put large poles in that obstructs it, it's there all the time, is my concern with it, and how we manage that.
Could you go back to that first one?
Sure.
Now, let's see, one who go bore hole in the table and put them down. That way they would be removable.
But I think you're going to find that to buy the right kind of umbrellas are going to cost a lot more than $250. I want to make sure that we talk about that, because you want to, you're going to have to buy a much larger one than we have downtown, and it's going to have to be of a totally different structure. And so, but they are available, and you can get them in rectangular size, very large rectangular size, or round ones that actually tip and that type thing. So the product is available if we want to go with that type of removable.
And this is the only one that could put the furniture around, and the umbrella could go with it?
Right, or the last option, which would just cover the whole space.
Are these tables fixed down there, though?
They are, but they can get emboldened.
We've had a recommendation that we do a little more study on this, Mr. Frunt asked that question, so we'll, we'll look at this and continue to study it, and we'll bring it forward at our next work session. Thank you, appreciate that. Item 3D is the Office of the City Manager. 3D1 is the Communications Plan Review. Ms. Clark?
Yes, sir, I'll stay on the side, so you can actually see some of them. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Communications Office for the City of Perry's mission is to keep Mayor and Council, city staff, Perry's citizens, businesses, and visitors well-informed and educated while enhancing the city's transparency and visibility. An effective communications plan is essential in ensuring the city's image of professionalism, effectiveness, and strategic planning and implementation. The strategic plan that you have in your board pack achieves the following. Explains the process of communicating information in an accurate and efficient manner to the City of Perry's target audiences to strengthen communication. Explains policies and procedures to research, create, and disseminate information about city functions and activities to various audiences. And provides information about official City of Perry branding and was considered acceptable and non-acceptable uses. And outlines the city's communication, creation, and dissemination policies. The Communications Office will continue to research and implement effective ways to communicate Mayor and Council's priorities as well as city news, as to keep target audiences informed and educated about the city's priorities. This office, of course, is always available to assist other city departments and officials with communication tasks, to include content creation as well as strategic communications. And I'm here to answer any questions that you have about the plan.
And was amazing. You did that just an after name, didn't you?
A couple of after names.
Questions? Comments?
Well, as you said earlier, she does a great job already, so the plans is fantastic.
Well done.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate the work that you've put into it. We look forward to use the last thing that's planned as we move forward.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. 3D2 is an update from Georgia Economic Development Environment. Ms. Harden?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I recently had the opportunity to attend the Georgia Economic Developer Association Conference. It was at Lake Lanier, and it was the first time we had been together since September 2019. So our, the theme of it was family reunion, and it was very exciting to be back with about 180 economic developers from throughout the state, as well as associated industry professionals. There were some really great networking opportunities, and the caliber of speakers was incredible. So tonight, I'm just going to share with you some lessons learned and how that relates to Perry economic development. This is Commissioner Nunn, he runs the DCA program for the state and community attendance, since many of us work closely with the Department of Community Affairs for our programs, including City of Perry. Workforce development was the number-one addressed topic across multiple panels. With the June 26 expiration of federal benefits, we're going to see more people in Georgia and in Perry going back to work. With the June 26 expiration of federal benefits, we're gonna see more people in Georgia and in Perry going back to work. There's about 26 states that are ending the federal unemployment benefit between now and early July. Three states are actually giving a return-to-work incentive payment of anywhere from $1,200 to $2,000, provided that that employee goes off unemployment insurance. So that was really interesting to hear. They also did talk about how teachers truly are the workforce pipeline. And for me, that really reinforced the introductions that we recently made and the connections with the Houston County Career Academy and the work-based learning instructors. Several weeks before local students graduated high school, we introduced those teachers to five area employers that were ready to hire graduating students and even past graduates. So it really enforced that what we're doing here is correct with our workforce development. Last Thursday, we helped facilitate a career fair for advanced drainage systems. I did send you all a follow-up from the company about that, that they had seven on-the-spot hires with an incentive to come to work, and they were very pleased, and they got a pipeline of new applicants that they'll filter through as well. And it just helped create the word, spread the word that that company is hiring. So that was very exciting to hear. Another component of workforce, just to make a mention, is that housing is critical. You have to have diverse housing. You have to have more than just single-family X dollar. We will see more multifamily come down the pipeline. We'll see smaller subdivisions, we'll see larger ones. But as Perry continues to grow, we do need to have affordable housing to attract and retain the current workforce. So the other panels talked about regionalism and site selection. And now that COVID-19 is in the rearview mirror, which is why we're all back together in here tonight instead of the Art Center, we are seeing more activity with site selections, commercial realtors. And a big point that they made to note was that projects truly are data-driven. Site locations are data-driven. We saw that with our hotel project that's coming to the Georgia National Fairgrounds. They liked Perry, they liked what they saw, they liked the CBRE study that the Georgia National Fairgrounds Zone had performed that showed the potential occupancy rates for a hotel there. But they didn't commit until they sent their market study folks here to Perry for three days. And we spent time with them, and they talked to other hotels, and they really did their research and their numbers to get the data so that they could commit to, yes, let's build a hotel at the fairgrounds. That is still moving forward, and they plan to be here later this summer. So it is still moving forward. COVID did delay it, but they are committed to come. So, and also reinforced to me that what we're doing with the data that we have with our sites and buildings database is correct. On a weekly basis, our commercial realtors are either stopping by my office, saying, hey, I'm on my way to a meeting, I need this data. And they happen to catch me, and we're able to print it for them from whatever site they want. Or they'll reach out if they're working on, you know, a restaurant project, and they're like, hey, I'm stumped on this, I need this data. So we can provide demographic, household income data for them, and we also use it to sell projects. We've had Eastgate Shopping Center under contract twice, and that data really helped with that. And we hope that we'll have good news in the near future about another contract. And last but not least, we had a really engaging speaker that spoke about marketing your community. This is Jesse Cole. He's the owner of the Savannah Bananas, which is why we're to Hill and Sea. And he, his story was awesome. He bought the team in 2015, and in 2016, they sold two tickets in six months, and nobody wanted to come at their games. Fast forward five years, they have an 8,000-ticket holder waiting list. They sell out of games in 48 hours. And he talked about, the way they did that was they made it an experience for the fans, and they transformed the game, and they wanted it to be something that you come and enjoy and experience. I think that the city of Perry in similar ways has done that over the last few years, starting with the branding evergreen initiative that Robert Smith did, and the special events downtown, our new city parks with the quality-of-life amenities, new developments, the diversity of housing options. People are coming to Perry to experience those types of things. They want to play and explore. And the effects of this are apparent with our high housing growth. We're seeing an increase in property values. We have properties under contract, and we have many more developments poised to come in the near and distant future. So overall, this conference was a valuable experience. I appreciate the opportunity of being able to go so that we can continue improving and learning from other economic developers throughout the state and bringing that back to Perry. So are there any questions?
Questions, council? Comments relative to this economic development? Thank you. Appreciate it. 3D 4 is a, I'm sorry, 3D 3 is a follow-up on Trey Bella Salon. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, mayor. Mayor and council, on your board pack is a memo from me and also some information, which follows up the June 1 presentation or discussion by Mr. Baker relative to the Trey Bella Salon and the issue about his parking lot. In that information I provided to you was a statement from Mr. Baker, his smart inspection report site and certificate of occupancy. Also was provided to you the building inspection history, so you had some idea to clarify about some of the points Mr. Baker made. Also the notice from Mr. Wood about his parking lot and Mr. Wood's explanation about parking lot being missed before the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. From the administration's standpoint, council has a series of options. The first one, council does nothing. If council does nothing, Mr. Wood's letter holds true, and the bakers have to pave that parking lot at their own cost and have to have it taken care of as soon as possible, unless there's some other timeframe that's given to them. If they fail to do that, then they will be in violation and will be cited. Second would be that council approves removing the paving requirements. I would not recommend this to you because, number one, that would be a violation of our city code. And in addition to that, I think that that would set a precedent. You'd have all kinds of people coming in saying, I want to have a waiver, I don't think I need to do it, I wasn't told. You know, we go through this song and dance, not all the time, but on occasion. Third would be the city approved paving or contracting for the paving of the parking lot. I realize that particularly as elected officials, since there was an error made by the staff, this has a lot of emotional attraction and appeal, whereby I'd also like to point out to you, that's a blatant violation of state law. You cannot use public funds to make improvements on private property. Also, not only would it be illegal, but it also set a bad precedent, because you need everybody else wanting to come in. You know, Publix, whatever the case may be, asking council to pave. Fourth option would be to arrange for the Downtown Development Authority to provide a low-interest loan to the bakers for the parking lot improvements. This has also already been provided to the bakers. Since the Trey Bella Salon is located in the downtown district, this would be a feasible option that provides you some type of combination about relief. Because certainly it would be a lesser loan cost in all likelihood and extended timeframe than the bakers would get if they went to a financial institution. But it still accomplishes what's required, plus it gives a little profile to the Downtown Development Authority. Last one would be to authorize time extension for the bakers to pave the parking lot. That may be the easiest, at least administratively, timeframe, but then there'd be some question about how long would that timeframe have to be, how long would it go on? And my sense from Mr. Baker's presentation is that it's certainly not satisfying him or address what his concerns are. So therefore, the administration recommends to you all to go with the option four, which is the Downtown Development Authority, you know, providing a loan to Mr. Baker, assuming Mr. Baker is interested in doing that. The loan would be per the standard loan processes that the DDA requires. However, because of the interest from the council, the council in essence would support that loan. In other words, if there's some type of questions relative to the bakers, immediate qualifier, some type of issue like that, we'd offer some type of consideration. There would be some type of timeframe. They'd also have to go with that, maybe a little longer than what Mr. Baker provided. But particularly if the DDA is providing the money upfront, then he should get this contracted right away and have the issue resolved. If council agrees with that, you know, it will provide relief relative to the community developments oversight on the parking lot. And like I mentioned before, would highlight and profile the authority and how the authority is there to assist structures, businesses, and everything in the downtown district.
Just another item to make a mention of that, based on meetings with Mr. Baker and our downtown manager. He is still waiting. There is a possibility that funding from the regional commissions program might come through. So if that does happen, he would also receive funds to be able to do it quicker as well.
Well, certainly if he finds a more favorable funding source, I think that'd be fine with the city. I think whatever the determined timeline is that the parking lot has to be paved, needs to be established and done, regardless of what financing options they have. And then, of course, the backup would be the DDA.
Questions?
My thoughts were to combine suggestions four and five, the low-interest loan from DDA and a time extension. Of course, not thinking about the fact that DDA money would come all at once upfront, well, then they wouldn't need a time extension, and I understand that. So I amend what I'm saying because of that. But if there was any delay in them getting a low-cost loan, then I would want them to have extended time.
Right, I would anticipate whatever the application process would be fine, as long as the applicant and the DDA act prudently. In other words, I would not recommend that it's just left up to when other bakers decide they're gonna make the application to the DDA. I mean, you can't let it go on and on, but yes, we'd work with that.
I do feel like it's.
Excuse me, go ahead.
I feel like it's important, like as you said, that the city owns up to their part of the era there that happened. And I think that then creates good vibes with other businesses, where they know that the city will admit, we made a mistake here, and we're going to try to compensate you or help you make, not compensate, but have a favorable resolution. And that, you know, that word gets around on the street, too. So that's always important to me.
If all of you that were on council at the time remember, we said we were gonna make the automobile dealerships pave their lots. Any of y'all remember that? We have yet to enforce that. Could you explain to me, please, Lee, why they can go so long, at least, what is it, four years, five years? I don't know, I can't remember.
Well, there are two primary parking areas that I can think of, Mr. Hunt. The first one are the folks right up next to Squires, and they have paved their parking lot. They had that taken care of. The second is the major issue on the Beckham property over at Courtney Hodges and Perry Parkway. That is involved in an ongoing discussion relative to some variations relative to the construction requirements from the planning commission. My understanding is that basically has been resolved. And so therefore, the owner of the property has been advised that they're gonna have to pave the parking lot. There was also a question about how extensive the paving would have to be depending on what the use of the property is. Okay, for example, if you come in with a, with a Publix, for example, because of the extensive amount of traffic coming in and turning and all that type of stuff, you have to have a regular solid base, you have to have a regular solid cover, you have to have curbing, you have to deal with the stormwater, all those type of things. One of the questions that came up relative to the planning commission to go back was to take a look at, well, what would you need to do if you were just storing vehicles on the site? Would you have to spend that much money? And my understanding is that they have worked out an arrangement with that. They've lessened some of the standards from the heavy-duty parking lot, and they're supposed to be going forward with that.
We've been going forward with that for how many years? Anybody know? Four years, five years? And we haven't done a thing, I want to say we haven't done a thing about it. No action has been taken as of today.
Well, the parking lot up here is finished.
I'm sorry?
It's BJ's, the parking lot's finished, it's paved. They went in and paved, they put the paving down and everything else, and I know that Big Tree also was another one that we, and they have.
Well, some of them have, but I'm talking about the ones that don't have it. We've let them by, and let them by, and let them by. And here we are pushing this gentleman on a mistake that we made. If I made a mistake in my business, I would eat it. We're not eating it. The city's not, we're not, to me, it's not fair what we're doing to this gentleman. We gave him permission to open his business, we gave him all the documents that was required. He says you can open your business. Now we come back and say, no, you, you're gonna have to close it down or pave that lot, or until you pave that lot. That, to me, is unfair. I don't believe any of you as businessmen in here would agree that you could say one thing one day and then change it the next day. It's just not fair. Now, I agree that we need to help him in some way, as we can.
I don't believe anybody said we're gonna shut him. I don't believe anybody said we're gonna shut him down. We're giving him an alternative of a low-interest loan, that we're gonna provide the cash for him to do it so he can go ahead and do it on an extended period of payback.
I understand that. But what if he doesn't choose to do it, to make the loan, low-interest loan? We've given him permission to open his business. We made a mistake. And I'm glad to hear Lee admit that we made a mistake.
Mr. Hunt, there's never been any denial at all. You know, I wanted to go back and address it. There's never been a denial at all that there was an error made by community development on that.
Okay.
Okay, but I, I do not, this is the city manager, okay? I don't believe because you have a miss on a regulatory item, when he was still allowed to open the business, he still can operate the business. He can keep operating that business as long as he wants without having that parking lot paved. However, what he was advised by Mr. Wood was, if you don't get that parking lot paved, then we're gonna take you to magistrate court, just like we take any other violator.
Have you took the automobile dealers to court?
No, Mr. Hunt, we have not, because I told you, they're going through a negotiated process. Well, no, wait, Mr. Hunt. Okay, the primary thing going back on the major area, which is at Courtney Hodges and Larry Walker Parkway, okay? We advised them what they needed to do, the owner, because it's the owner who's responsible for whatever those improvements are. There was back and forth between the owner and the Dodge ownership there that stores the vehicles there. And they originally came back and said, we're gonna relocate all those vehicles to the other side of I-75. You may remember they have that new shop over there, I think it's for trucks or whatever. Gonna move all the vehicles over there. Okay, fine, they had a timeframe, well, then they decided not to do that. So we came back again, but when you're in negotiations with one of our boards or commissions, or negotiate relative court, whatever the case may be, the enforcement actions are put on hold until there's a final resolution. For the Bella Trey Salon, the negotiations, so to speak, have gone on, and they're at your point where there's nothing. So it's a decision of council decide where they want to go. They don't go to the planning commission for relief, they don't go to the building inspector, but you don't get that. It's council's decision on what they want to do. So like I said, if council decides that, it's so sad, and you don't have to pave that parking lot, that is your right, and then they can go ahead. But I'm advising you, that is establishing a terrible precedent, because that's gonna come back to haunt you again, like most of these things that are done. Just because you have an item that is missed from a regulatory standpoint does not negate the fact that the regulations still apply and you have to follow.
Is there not state court precedent on that?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Well, let's figure out the best way we can help him and do it.
That's what the recommendation is.
That's what the recommendation is.
Because I can tell you, we're not going to pave it out of city funds, because I don't look good in stripes, and I'm too old to serve and suffer.
Let's try to see. Put one on and see how it looks.
I just don't think that'll work, and so.
I'm not suggesting, suggesting that we do anything illegal. I'm just saying, we've done this in the past. We've let these folks lie, let these folks lie, let these folks fly. But it seems like we're putting the gun to his head and saying, you've gotta get yours done.
Well, that's, I don't think that's the case. There's a tremendous amount.
How else can you say it?
I, I can say that there's a tremendous amount of pressure that is being placed on everybody in town as well, relative to not only this, but other code violations as well. And that's the reason that the Beckham property over at Courtney Hodges is going, something's going to happen on there, because it has. going to happen on there because it has been...
Y'all keep saying, the two of you keep saying it's going to happen. Hasn't happened yet. Been four or five years, but y'all, none of you seem to know the time date on that. I wish you would please advise council how long that time period has been that you've been negotiating.
You will have that, Mr. Hunt.
Tomorrow night, please.
As far as I know, yes, unless there's some delay from community development to get you the chronology going on.
So what is, what procedure should we go through here, Mr. Gilmore? Do we need, if council's preference is forward, should we move forward or are you going to...
Yes. I mean, if council concurs, understanding some concerns or some objections that some of the council members have. But if they concur to proceed that way, then that's what we're going to do. If council wants a delay to think about that, you can do that. If council wants to do some other option, like, for example, Mr. Hunt talked about, then you can say that's what you want to do. So I just believe it's important to point out to you all what the potential problems and issues are depending on which option you select.
So council members?
I think we should lower for any number of...
Well, I think that's what we're going to do. I mean, that's the intent. It's not, we're not going to shut down. Our intent is to work with them and provide them with a low-interest loan. So, okay. Mr. Jones?
Four and five.
Mr. Gilmore, you, Mr. Hunt, we'll get you your information as what, how long we've been waiting on the other. But the council's recommendation is to look at providing with a low-interest loan. There are some other options coming from the regional commission as well. They'll look at those and we will work with them on making this happen in a reasonable length of time.
Mayor, one point of clarification, please, is that the city is not offering that loan. It would need the downtown authority to make sure that that's reflected clearly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
I sincerely hope that we change our regulations so that this doesn't happen again.
Yes, sir.
You and I together.
I'm sorry?
You and I agree on that totally. I tell you...
Good.
I mean, this is one that personally I'm tired of dealing with, so.
Thank you, council. Item 3D4 is sewage system constraints. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you. Mayor and council, also in your packet is a memo from me talking about some recommendations you need to do relative to our sewage system and with the rapid expansion that we're having with that. I have provided to you an outline of the various projects that are going on primarily to emphasize how council has been planning and working to address this issue. For those who are new to our area, to give you an idea, we are issuing approximately 400-some single-family permits per year for the city, which is a considerable clip to go along. And so therefore, that can cause some problems. So what I'm recommending to you is that if you agree with this outline, we will prepare the necessary resolution. But it's set relative to sewage service. The first one is that it is economically feasible to provide sewage service based on the projected use of the parcel of property. You may remember, we've touched on this before. The second is that the city can afford the necessary improvements with a minimum impact on the current customers. This also has been one of the directions council has talked about. The next recommendation would be improvements will be made as part of the overall service plan. In other words, we're not recommending to do temporary fixes that will not have only a short-time use. Service for new customers will be restricted to the current system's ability to handle additional load. No annexation petition will be accepted if the sewer system cannot handle the projected load based on the development schedule. Okay? As an example, we can have a development come in with 300 lots. It's highly unlikely 300 new homes will be constructed in one year's time. So you take a look at that crossover between the balance of what is possible projection compared to what the system can handle, and that would be the determination on how many permits could be issued. Undeveloped parcels in the city shall not be rezoned, well, they can be rezoned if they want, but permitted unless current sewage system can handle the projected additional load. You may remember, we have some parcels now that are interested in coming in and they would tie into, for example, Perry Branch, and Perry Branch needs to be upgraded. So consequently, those projects would just have to stay on hold until that project is done. Where possible, developers may pay for sewage improvements. The city will repay these improvements outside the development over a 10-year period if the improvements are part of the future system. In other words, if somebody wants to really kick it up, you know, and they want to advance the money, then we will repay them over a 10-year period as long as it is outside of the development. Developer still has to pay for all the sewer costs and everything inside the development. An example of that, some of the council members may remember, when Wood and Eagle subdivision came in, there was an arrangement made with the developer for that to pay for the sewer line that took care of Wood and Eagle, went down Langston Road, I think it's, no, Langston Road. Sanford Road, then came down 41 to tie into the plant, and we paid back over time. And then priority will be given to new development within the incorporated limits of the city before considering something outside. In other words, an annexation requesting to come in. I'm not anticipating that this is, should be interpreted as a moratorium, although it could affect some developments possibly. This certainly is not anticipated or should not be considered to be anti-growth because it's far from it. It's just practical, common sense, business sense. Timeframe should not be extraordinarily long. You may remember, you've already given an okay to the new wastewater treatment plant, and we are anticipating that that will be coming online and operating within four years' time, maybe a little less than that. You've also okayed the improvements around Perry Branch Road. You may remember, make some connections on there. We have authorized improvements to the Perry Parkway lift station to take care of what may be some additional load, at least on an interim basis. And you also have given an okay to proceed with the sewer outfall line, the main line running down Mossy Creek, which will eventually tie into the new wastewater treatment plant and take care of all the sewage needs on the east side of Perry Parkway.
Council members, concerns or questions relative to this action?
I have a couple.
Good.
Y'all were surprised, I know.
We need to have some.
And on the first page where you said that developers demand possibly seeding certain city portions of the city's systems, I think we're already at that point, aren't we? I mean, with the fact that what's going on in East Perry, that we had it, we had it now. We need it now, right? I mean, we...
To a certain degree, yes.
Yes. And then no annexation petition will be accepted if the sewer system cannot handle the projected load based on development schedule. Well, that alarms me based on comments you made in another meeting about encroachment from possibly Warner Robbins or others coming down. If we have to tell people no, then somebody else is going to tell them yes. And I'm concerned about that.
That is, that's a very good point. That is a possible problem, but if that was going to be done, you have one or two options. The first one is a developer proceeds with the development in the county. If they proceed in the county, then that's going to require an acre-size lot for each house. They're economically not going to do that in all likelihood. There's no market for that. It doesn't make any sense, okay? The other alternative is they'll have to get a sewage treatment provider from someplace else. The only other place they're going to be able to get it from, as far as I know, for that area is from Warner Robbins. And Warner Robbins has got a lot of issues on its own. You know, my understanding is they're close to somewhat stopping on where they are, and so we'll be well ahead before they can get any of that design work, infrastructure done, all that type of stuff. The other aspect with it, you all may remember that we have a service delivery plan. So we're talking about the area that's in the Perry service delivery area to be taken care of. So we're not dumb up going outside or whatever the case may be. But for the developer, there's basically, if I want to, if I want, in general terms, if I want to get a decent return on my money, I'm going to have to have community sewer. There's only one location for where we're talking about provider that's going to have that. And if we are not ready for that, then they can make a choice. The first one is they wait, okay? The second is that they say, well, okay, fine, I want to get in the queue, so to speak, and so therefore, I still will request annexation in, so I'll already be in, assume it's legal. I'll already be set, I'll be ready to go, so when you are able to get sewer service to me, I'm already in the city, so I get first dibs.
But there's a, keeping in mind that there is a large number of already-planted subdivisions that we were committed to. So we have to look at that on what our system will take. A prime example is the 500, you know, lots out that we're spending a lot of money right now to take care of Talton Road. I mean, I don't think, I think you'll seal that build out over some period of time. I don't see it building 50 to 100 houses a year or so over the next five years or so. Our system ought to be totally in place, and I think that'll happen to all, because builders are not going to go out there and build 500 houses in one subdivision in a year. It's almost physically impossible.
And he's building separate tanks that will eventually connect to the city?
No, he's, we've got a line in that's going to go nowhere.
Talked about doing that, but backed off.
Yeah, we went to Wind River, and that's going to be in our system, and our system will take care of it. It's our, we know that, we're looking at the load that we're anticipating plus the load we already have. And so it's one of those things, we have to look at every subdivision as to where it will work or will not work. And some might work. Is that not correct, Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Depending on where they are in the line.
Right. You know, for example, at least the best of my knowledge, the Perry Preserve area, does everybody know where that is? That's good to go. I mean, it depends on where you are in the city and the projected load you're going to have. Now, the big demand, of course, is in, you know, Perry East, and you're planning and working to move ahead and get that addressed, but it's not immediately there, ready to go.
Oh, good questions or concerns?
With the possibility of everything slowing down, which it is, we're going to keep that in consideration, aren't we, on how fast we go?
Oh, yeah, well, that will be, that's a very good point, Mr. Hunt. That will be a factor that's very beneficial for us, but it's not slowing down our schedule. As you may remember, well, there's two major things right now. The first one is you all okayed the first round for the Perry Public Facilities Authority funding to get the permitting and everything for the wastewater treatment plan and some of the improvements out by Perry Branch and the Langston Road stormwater pond. In addition to that, at least as it stands right now, there is the, there's an American Recovery Act, you know, money coming from the federal government, you know, for water and sewer improvements. So we think our planning, you have done an excellent job, like I mentioned before, planning what needs to be done for this. So we're now in the implementation stage, so it's not going to be a super-long time for folks to have to do it, if they're even effective at all.
So in yesterday's, I think, news anyway, building supplies are going up 73 percent. That's a lot of money.
No question. Council members, your thoughts? Does Mr. Gilmore have concurrence from you to move forward in putting together this resolution outlining our position on future sewer growth?
Yes, he does.
Okay. Ms. Phyllis?
Okay.
Do you have concurrence, Mr. Gilmore, to move forward? Thank you. Item 3E is the Perry Police Department. 3E1 is the Neighborhood Watch Safe Cam Program. Chief Lynn?
Thank you, sir, mayor and council. This should be fairly straightforward. You've heard me say several times in front of y'all how we use both business and personal systems to, you know, when we have a crime in a certain area and we go see if there's any video, if they share it with us, then we use it in the investigation of the crime. You may remember, we hired a young lady from Oklahoma a little while back, Kim Morton, and I farmed this out of her. This is actually her work, her assistant at Tabitha, so Tabitha helped us with it. So all we're doing is looking at a way to be more organized. We've got kind of an informal anecdotal system now where we know who's got systems and who doesn't. Or we go look in a neighborhood and we have something happen and we look to see, you know, what's apparent, then we go see if they've got a system. So this is done at a number of agencies around the U.S. So basically, this is a form that would be on our website, and we would advertise on our social media. But where if somebody that's willing to share their video with us on a need-to-know basis could just go sign up and be on our list, so we'd have a resource list. And that way, when we have something that happens in a particular neighborhood, then we can look and say, oh, well, we've got this person, that person, and this other person, and this business is at the entrance to the neighborhood, and we can go focus on them on the, instead of having to go through trying to figure out if it's got something. And we did staff this through Ms. Newby to make sure we weren't crossing any legal lines, and she helped us with some language. And so that's it in a nutshell. We just want to put something that willing entities can fill out, and we'll push on social media and see who fills it out, and that gives us just a resource as opposed to an ad hoc resource as well that we have now. Any questions?
Council members, questions relative to posting this up on our city website?
I got one question.
Sure.
I know it's a good idea, but then, what about people? How are we going to get the public informed that we got this in place?
Well, I, initial thought on that is that we'll push it out to the police department's social media presence in the cities, and we'll just make it available. And then, as we're working through cases and we run across somebody that maybe lets us use their video if they're in our park, then we'll tell them. So we'll do it that way, too. And I think, you know, doing all that, we'll be able to get the word out.
Because, you know, one of my main concerns is that, you know, some people don't have access to it.
Right.
So we got to be able to available ability so that the community will know that we do have it going on, you know?
Certainly. And I have no way of knowing that somebody has a surveillance system and doesn't have access to the internet. They'd probably go hand-in-hand, but I don't know that to be absolute true.
But we'll know, because people be talking.
Yes, yes. And success breeds success. So, and, you know, neighbors will tell neighbors, well, you know, so somebody got something out of my car, and, you know, the neighbor had a video and helped the police, and they solved it, and, you know, that's what we're seeing so far.
Council members, any more questions or concerns? Does the chief have your concurrence to move forward with developing this, putting it up on our website?
Tell me, give the cost. Whatever we paid Mr. Clark, I think.
She's already done the work, she just hasn't made it live, so...
That's correct.
Yeah.
It's in-house.
It's in-house.
No cost.
No, no additional cost. Y'all don't have to sign an invoice or anything.
Just to explain the process just a little further, this is an interactive form on the website. We can also create a PDF form for people that don't have internet access or going on to the website. But what happens is the person will fill this form out, and then it goes, the form and all the details on it are directly emailed to Ms. Janet Duffin at the police department, and she will be the one, I was told, that will be collecting this information. So no third party is involved in this whatsoever.
Thank you. And from a community relations standpoint, when we have somebody that's on our registry and there's something that happens in their neighborhood or their business area, then we'll reach out and tell them, if they don't already know that they, you know, have an actual additional benefit of being informed. Lee?
Any other questions? I know that we've got concurrence to move forward, so. Thank you, chief. Please move forward with it.
Yes, sir.
Item 4 is council member...
Item four is councilmember, Mr. Hunt, anything for us this evening?
No, sir. Mr. King?
Yes, sir. I just want to thank Mr. Gilmore, Cattah Street, it looks good, some lights on the lone street. You want me to thank you guys?
Good. Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. What is, Mr. Van Nuys?
Well, I just would like to thank the police department, the chief and his folks for the beautiful job that they did in, on Nolan Street.
Yes, ma'am.
That, that wouldn't happen in many places where lives were saved.
It worked out best possibly, the best it possibly could.
Did we find out where the notification went to some of our councilmembers? Did it go to a mayor and council box?
Well, so when we got to the department, it doesn't read that, but I'd be happy to, with Tabitha's help again. So I did send a notification out on Friday morning when it was still unfolding, and it went to the mayor and council work group. So apparently, some of y'all received it in your inbox and some did not. And Tabitha, do you have an answer on that? I know I pushed that off on you this afternoon, but I don't know if you had time to look at it after.
Yes, sir. We contacted Hargray about, I'm sorry, we did contact Hargray this afternoon, kind of like the regional manager, to see if in the future we can have those group emails go directly to inboxes as well as those folders. So he is researching that currently, and hopefully we'll have a decision or-
We'll ask him a different question, is why some of us, it does come to our inbox and some of us it does not. Because it came to my inbox, and it's also in the work group. So, I mean, it, somewhere along the way, there probably needs something-
I ran into the same thing with the management group. You, there's different levels of following those groups, and if you put it on the highest level, it comes to your inbox as well. I'll get with Tabitha, maybe in the morning and show her what I did, because I was having the same issue with the management group.
And I have some of my others, and so I think it's, you know, important that we all do that, because it is confusing. I mean, the emails are going out, they're going into a certain box, but if you do not know, to go look at that box and assume that it didn't come into your inbox, then it's something, communications are critical, especially those type, and we need to make sure that we've got all those settings right.
And I'll make sure, once they reach back out to me with their research, that that's addressed.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, Mr. Van Nuys?
Well, I, we're having Juneteenth celebrations this weekend on Saturday at the Event Center. We're asking everyone to come out and enjoy. It's from twelve to four, Saturday.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Protem, do you want to tell us, you know, anything about your trip?
Good boy.
He slipped away, yeah.
He asked was enjoyable, yes, but up from that note, Mayor.
You don't have anything, you know? Oh, well, some of us are young and have all this time.
Young good, they will tell me, young good.
Mr. Smith, anything for us?
Here, I do one. I know you're all looking forward to July thirty-first and getting started on our strategic planning initiative. We've been talking about it long enough, finally time to get to work. In anticipation of kicking it off, I lost some copies of this. In anticipation of getting kicked off, we're looking to collect some information beforehand to kind of see how you all would like the process to unfold, what sort of topics you'd like to possibly discuss, so we go into preparing for that, and also maybe some topics to avoid that type of thing. So, yes, thank you. So what I have here is a very simple questionnaire.
Of course.
If y'all wouldn't mind taking the time to complete this and getting it back to me, that would be very beneficial. And if you have any questions, if you need any assistance, any of that type of stuff, I'd also be willing to assist as well.
May I get one?
Okay. Looking forward to getting started. It's going to be here before you know it. If there's anything else left to discuss about strategic planning initiative, I'd be happy to sit down and talk with you. Thank you.
Ms. Doobie?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes. To antagonize folks even more. I'd like to recommend to council at your meeting tomorrow that you approve a moratorium on the Conservation Sub, Land Use District. The reason, for, that will be for a ninety-day period. The reason this is being recommended to you is to allow staff and interested parties to go back and determine whether the Conservation subdivision process, as it originally was intended, is actually working out that way. One of the things I have noticed, and have some input from some of you all as well, is that a lot of these Conservation subdivisions, they're, they're meeting the bare minimum relative to that, but you're not really getting an effective mix between open green space and housing. And what you wind up doing is getting greater density on the housing while avoiding some of the requirements, for example, on the regular land use. And then what they say for the Conservation is some strip of land back along the back of the property that really can't be used by the public or any of that type of stuff. So unless you do not concur with that, we'll have a resolution for you at your meeting tomorrow and request that you pass it.
And we did that once before with the Conservation, I think?
Yes, remember, we did that because of the problem with the houses so close to the street, and there wasn't any room to get two vehicles in the driveway and all that type of stuff. So that's been resolved for the newer ones. But just going back and take a look at there are a number of other issues, you know, like should we, excuse me, require more green space beside? Should we require sidewalks to go in on these types? There's just a number of things that, that when we talk about that, it may be more effective for the developer to come in with a planned unit development rather than just the standard Conservation-type subdivision. Now, this does not affect any of the other districts, like R-one, R-two, eight, they all remain the same. Any of the applications that already have been filed, if we have any relative to, that will proceed ahead, they won't be affected by the moratorium if you pass it.
Questions? Do you accept the recommendation to move forward with that moratorium?
Yes.
Please have it on the agenda for tomorrow. Appreciate that. Anything else?
No, sir.
Item five is department. Chief Lynn, anything else for us tomorrow?
Just to echo on what Ms. Van Nuys said, our officers that are on duty on mid-watch last, last Thursday night into Friday morning did an outstanding job. Had, not for a couple of decisions that they made, this could have turned out completely different. We had a crew that came out from out of town to do a robbery, and like I said, it worked out the best possible way it could. It was totally based on the observations and the actions of those officers, without direct information. It was in inferences and, and just, you know, good police work that they did. And you'll hear more about that later, we'll be trying to recognize it in some way that's appropriate. I mean, an excellent job.
There's no question about it. The results was very satisfying. Appreciate all the hard work. Thank you. And anything else you- Chief Parker?
Nothing further than that, sir.
Ms. Hart?
Not tonight, sir, thank you.
Mr. Swan?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just want to give y'all a brief update on what we have going on. Leisure services, we started our summer classes last week. We had about one hundred and fifty responding, so we got about a hundred and fifty kids participating. They're in-person classes we do, gardening, beekeeping. So we got several instructors from the community that come in teaching some STEM-based curriculum. We got some photography classes. Ms., Ms. Tabitha is actually teaching digital arts to our youth, so we're using all the talent that we have throughout the community to come in and introduce our kids during the summertime. It's not a traditional camp, but they can come in at designated times during the day, smaller class sizes, and it's a little more personal. So we're learning about, like I said, beekeeping, the life cycle of bees, plant propagation, which I'm going to sit in, because I don't know what that means. Even dealing with cows and livestock, so very excited about our summer classes. Online registration started today. I think the young man mentioned earlier, technology is wonderful when it works, so we're, we're working out some kinks. I mean, you know, anytime you turn something new on or try to be innovative, you'll find a few issues. And thank you, Mr. Mitchell and Ms. King for helping us in the middle of the heat and try to figure out what's going on with the system. But our, our citizens are able to use their mobile devices, their tablets, computers, PCs, and register the kids. So I think that adds a little more convenience to our programming, and that's pretty much it. So if y'all want to learn about plant propagation, if I'm even pronouncing that right, we'll be doing that at the leisure service department.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Ms. Pitton, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Ms. King?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Worthington?
Not tonight.
Mr. Dunn, anything for us?
No, sir.
Ms. Clark?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to bring attention to the rat card that was provided to you. This is our new parks rat card. It talks about all of our major parks. This was in response to a lot of feedback that we were receiving saying that they didn't know about a certain park, or they didn't know where it was or what it had. So this is available. We're going to put it online, but it's also available at our information kiosk throughout all the city facilities that we have, as well as any time we can give them out to visiting such as Leadership Perry last week and any type of groups, we make sure that those are available to them as well. We do have plenty of copies, so if you would like your own, please let me know, and I'll be happy to provide that for you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Tabitha, will we have things like that at the town hall for Needle, Pine Needle Park? Yes, ma'am. We'll have that and several other things. Okay, great.
Okay. Is there anyone else? I don't think so. I'd like to take an opportunity to thank Mr. Hunt for all the hard work this weekend on the vaccination effort. They had, I think it was twenty-three or twenty-four people from Houston Healthcare at the Event Center doing vaccination for anybody that wanted to walk in. And so they were well-prepared, did a very good job, and Mr. Hunt was very persistent in getting that set up here in Perry. So I thank you for all the hard work, Mr. Hunt. As many people as we get vaccinated, it's going to help, help everybody. There's no question about that. Just a reminder that our meeting tomorrow will be at the Event Center, five o'clock for pre-council, six o'clock for our normal council or regular council meeting at that time. Is there anything else to come before us tonight before we adjourn? Hearing done at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Call it a second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. We look forward to seeing you guys tomorrow afternoon at five o'clock. Thank you. We appreciate your interest.